May I have quiet, please? Welcome to the committee of a whole subcommittee. On the agenda tonight are statements of interest for the South Memorial School and the West Memorial School, as well as the review of the salary for the mayor. First topic being statement of interest of schools. I now welcome the school committee member and vice chair Bev Dunn to the podium, please. If you could just state your name for the record.
Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn, vice chair of the school committee and school committee member. Thank you, councilors, for taking this under your wing. Once again, we are requesting authorization to submit two statements of interest to the MSBA. These two statements of interest will be submitted under the accelerated repair program specifically for roofs. And you've voted in favor of this in the past. Unfortunately, last year, we weren't chosen, and we're trying again. It's a wonderful program. We have used it in the past to repair roofs throughout the district. One of the most recent was the high school roof. Last year, the MSBA had changed their requirements because their goal is to maximize the use of the funds they have. So they had changed the cutoff time for the roofs. It is 25 years, which makes you eligible for submission, and the roof at the South School and the roof at the West are both over 25 years. As a matter of fact, now they're a year older, so it makes our application even better, in my mind. You have before you some very specific language about submitting the SOI. We do hope that you will vote in favor of it. PBD receives a 54.5% reimbursement rate, so this is a very good program to go into because it will allow us to extend the life of the two schools on this submission. I have with me superintendent Mark Kerbel. I have Mr. Gingras and Mr. Dusset to answer questions, and I'd like to welcome school committee members Andrew Arnottis and Jared Hockman, who are here in support as well. Principal Nick Kaller is here from the West School. Okay. And principal and assistant superintendent Dr. Lord is here as well. Dr. Higgins, the principal of the South School, could not be here this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about this and hope you can support this.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Would any other elected officials from the school board like to come up and speak on this matter? Seeing none, I open it up to the council. Counselor Turco.
I just wanted to say that I would be in favor of both these submissions, you know, being that the both roofs are over 25 years old. I'm hoping that we do receive the funding for this, so I'm not sure how long these roofs will last. So I wanted to let you know that I am 100% in favor.
Counselor O’Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming. Through you, Mr. President, I want to ask a question. What's the timeframe if we are approved for this, if our statement of interest gets approved by the school authority for both roofs, roughly? Thank you.
Good question. We should hear in the fall. The goal is usually around October, November timeframe, and then at that point, if we are invited into that accelerated repair program, then we will have a very, it's aptly named, it's an accelerated program, so that all of the timeframes for getting into the program, for finding the vendors, for scoping out the work, those are all accelerated. So if we are accepted into the program, we would probably be putting on new roofs by the next school year.
Thank you. No further questions. I would comment and echo Counselor Turco's comment that I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here, school committee woman Dunn. I appreciate your enthusiasm always about our children and the facilities that they learn in, and you always stay on top of your game, along with your colleagues, in making sure that the buildings that we occupy, that our children occupy, are safe, and trying to get them modernized is very commendable. So thank you and your colleagues. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Committeewoman Dunn, I just had a question regarding the South and the West. Is there one that's in worse shape than the other, out of curiosity?
I'll be honest, I am not sure. I know they both need attention. There are leaks in those roofs. It's impacting the building itself, as well as the program, the classes, and, you know, the day-to-day operation. Let's see. I don't, I think they both have, they both have very specific problems with the roof and problem areas, so we're trying to correct them both at the same time. So I'd say, you know, probably depends on which way the weather is coming, of which one gets hit the worst, but they both need this attention desperately.
Sure. And the only reason why I kind of asked the question was that, I know you're putting in for both, and I think it's a great, I think, I applaud you on doing it. I just didn't know that if they came back and they did one versus the other, did you and your community as a whole feel that you were, I know you're pulling for both, but if you felt there was one that was more critical than the other, and it doesn't sound that, that's the situation. I hope that we get both. I just, if we got one versus the other, then we'd have to, I guess, deal with that.
That's the case. We really want both, but we're just going to keep going until we get them both done, if it has to be one at a time. You know, that would be, we would deal with it, but we really are hoping that we will get both. The accelerated program is a little bit different than the core program, where you do have to put your priorities.
Thank you for your efforts in the committee. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, of course, as well, will be supporting this. I had a question along the same lines as Counsel Saslaw with respect, excuse me, I understand the difference between the accelerated repair program and the core program, but along the same lines, I know that the Center School was put in, in the core program, was it last year, and I think a few years in a row, right, and it hasn't been approved. So why would we not, why was the Center School not put on the accelerated program to fix some issues that have been, continued to be in disrepair because they haven't been accepted in the core program?
That's a good question, and thank you for asking it. The reason that the Center School is, and it's coming across your desk, so just be ready for the next meeting. We are seeking to put the application in for the Center, as well as the High School, into the core program. The accelerated repair program is very targeted. For example, these two are just specifically roofs. The Center School needs many more things to be taken care of, so it's much more appropriate for that to go into the core program and get a lot of the deficiencies addressed in one project. Doing it under the core program is really piecemeal on that school. So that's why the decision has been made to just put this in for the two schools that specifically need the roofs right now, and then the Center and the High School will be treated a bit differently.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
You're welcome.
Counselor Charest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Dunn, do you know, are these flat roofs? Are they both flat roofs?
Yes, I believe they are.
And what would the warranty be on the flat roof? Do you happen to know that by any chance?
I actually don't know. Uh, boy. I'm looking for Mr. Haifey. He would, he's my go-to guy on those kinds of numbers. I really and truly do not know. I know, in general, what MSBA has been looking at is roofs 25 years or more in need, and I honestly do not know the exact date of a warranty on a flat roof.
Not a problem. I just know that, you know, we don't build new schools often here in PBD, and 25 years will go quick if it's a 25-year warranty on the roofs. So more curious on that, and what kind of extended warranty, if we can buy one. Also, maybe prudent here with, because how long we keep our schools. But as I said to the members on my last day in the school committee, I would never forget where I came from, and I'm certainly not going to forget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I supported these statements of interest in the last, the prior iterations. My intent is to support them again. There is no more cost-effective way for the city to proceed with these repairs than with 54% reimbursement from the state, so I really don't think there's a better option out there. Just procedurally, Mr. President, as you know, this came to us directly to the committee as a whole tonight, so I would move to receive communication from his honor of the mayor dated February 6, 2020, with respect to these statements of interest. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, procedurally, we're required to read into the record the entire language of these motions, which I'm prepared to do if no other councilors need to comment, so...
Seeing no other councilors having comment, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve and submit the following statement of interest to the MSBA regarding South Memorial Elementary School. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on February 13, 2020, prior to the closing date, PBD City Council, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit this Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest, SOI, form dated February 14, 2020, for the South Memorial Elementary School located at 16 Maple Street Extension, PBD, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is the accelerated repair program for the repair and/or replacement of roofs. The specific objective of this statement of interest is to partner with the MSBA for replacement of the failing roof on the entire facility of the South Memorial Elementary School, as articulated in the South Memorial Elementary School SOI, and the PBD School Committee hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Roll call, vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing.
Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve and submit the statement of interest to the MSBA regarding the West Memorial Elementary School. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 13, 2020, prior to the closing date, the City Council of PBD, City of PBD, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest, SOI, form dated February 14, 2020, for the West Memorial Elementary School located at 15 Bow Street, PBD, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and prioritize, and priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The MSBA priority selected is the accelerated repair program for repair and/or replacement of roofs. The specific objective of this statement of interest is to partner with the MSBA for the replacement of the failing roof on the entire facility of the West Memorial Elementary School, as articulated in the West Memorial Elementary School SOI, and PBD City Council hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the city, town, regional, school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So moved.
You heard the motion by Counselor McGinn. Roll call, vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
O'Neal.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Thank you to the school department for showing your support in this process. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank all of you, councilors.
We'll now move on to the second item on the agenda, the review of the salary of the mayor. According to Section 2-13, every February, we need to vote on the mayor's salary. I now turn it over to Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the mayor's salary is $120,000, which is the lowest of the three neighboring cities, Lynn, Salem, and Beverly. And we, in order to get qualified candidates and to compensate our current mayor, I suggest we move to award a 2% pay raise concurrent with this pay period. So moved. Actually, it's up to, starts July 1. So moved, Mr. Mayor. Mr. President.
You heard the motion by Counselor Gould. Comments on the motion? Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Gould, I appreciate the motion, but at this juncture, I wouldn't be in favor of any raises, specifically because it's tied to the city council, as well as the mayor, and whereas we recently went up 9% on people's water bills and also went up exponentially on their property taxes, I think, you know, although it's a minimal amount, I think, under $5,000, I'd still think at some point, we need to tighten the reins a bit. So I would not be in favor of raises this year. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor Mitsulis, welcome back.
Thank you. And nice to see you, councilors, and thank you for helping me out while I was gone. I know a lot of you took over a few of my responsibilities. Listen, I just, I can see both sides of this, Counselor Turco, about water bills going up and, you know, hitting the public for a pay raise, mayor's pay raise, city council. But, you know, I've been around long enough to say that, and I'm going to go back, and you councilors are going to probably say, here he goes again, he's going back in time, you know? I mean, I can go back about 40 years on this council, and I look at the city of Salem, I look at the city of Beverly, I look at the surrounding cities, I see what the mayor is making in all those communities. I see the mayor of PBD, who has a bigger constituency than the mayor of Salem or the mayor of Beverly, and he's not getting paid anywhere near what those mayors are getting paid. And that also reflects on the council also, because when it comes to the council voting themselves a pay raise, I get a little shy when it comes to that also. And I can understand that, because I feel guilty myself when I say, I'm going to vote myself a pay raise. But you know something? Reality tells you that you've got to at least make this competitive. If you look at what the city councilors are making in other communities, PBD's not even close. And if you look at what the mayor of PBD is making compared to the other communities, which are basically the same size, the mayor's not close. So I think at some point, we got to say, let's at least make this competitive, and maybe you'll get more people. I think we have a qualified mayor running the city anyways, but I think it just may draw more people to say, hey, look, you know, this may be, this may be worth giving up my job to run for mayor of PBD. Who knows? But my feeling has always been, let's make it competitive. I mean, if you're running a city, I mean, you should get paid pretty well for it, you know? That's my feeling. So I'll just let the councilors say what they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mitsulis. Seeing no other councilors, Counselor Welton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As the newest counselor, I've never been in a position where, two months into my job, I would essentially vote for a raise for myself, so I just have to acknowledge that that's an awkward thing for me. However, I understand the concerns raised by Counselor Turco. I'm in favor of the 2% increase, and the reason I am, and I'm prepared to vote for it, is I see the situation that we had in 2018, where we chose to bring parity to the mayor's salary, and in one fell swoop, increased the salary by 9%. I'd like to avoid that. I think, you know, we can't forecast the financial situation, where we're going to be in the next few years, but I think an incremental raise of 2% is a more fiscally responsible approach than waiting for there to be a lack of parity with our mayor and the surrounding community. So I'm not in favor of giving myself a raise. Again, I think it's a little awkward that we're tied to it, and especially being the new guy here, it's especially awkward for me. However, I am in favor of an incremental 2% raise. Thank you.
Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you. I'm going to support the raise as well, and the reason why is, I think, I, in the past, have been fiscally conservative, I know that. I've had some issues with the budget. I've actually had issues with the raises that we've given to people across the city. The issue I have with the raises, the fact that we have been giving them raises, we sign off and we give a raise three years in a row. To me, I've been adamantly opposed to doing that. I believe that you should review, most people, when they go to work, they get a review once a year, and then the raises decide whether they get it or not. It's based upon the performance of the company, the performance of the employee. I'm not in favor of giving raises across the board, as this council has voted in the past for three consecutive years. I believe what we're doing tonight and looking at it on a year-to-year basis is the way to do it, and I agree with what Counsel Welton has talked about as far as, when we don't offer a raise, then all of a sudden, we do look at a 9% or 10% increase. And I don't know if that's the best situation. And also, I think, as Counsel Mitsulis said, if we look at the salaries of the other surrounding cities and towns, I think we should be competitive, and I, it certainly does not put us at the top of the scale by any means at all. But for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting the vote on raising the mayor's salary by 2%, which I actually thought was quite modest and a fair motion proposed by Counsel Gould. Thank you.
Counselor Charest.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it is a modest raise of 2%, but it was also at a time right now that, as we heard throughout the last couple of years, is the rate, the taxes, and I just don't, I often wonder, I know it's part of a timing that we do in February, that we haven't even seen a budget come in front of us. And I know there was some checks, some raises that hasn't been allocated in the past, I think, 18 months, awards were back. So I'd like to see those things get settled before we submit to a raise at this time. I just don't think the timing is appropriate. Thank you.
Counselor O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. My brief comments are that I would agree that general consensus that 2% is a reasonable number. However, as it's currently, as we all know, it's currently linked to the raise for the city council, so I'm not in favor of giving us our raise ourselves. I said it two years ago, we should separate the two, so that the mayor's salary and the city council's salary are separate, but for those reasons, I will not support the raise. Thank you.
Seeing no other councilors, roll call, vote.
Counselors Welton.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Mitsulis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Charis.
No.
Manning Martin.
No.
Turco.
No.
O'Neal.
No.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 4.
While we have the committee as a whole, one other agenda item that we will be adding at this moment is a celebration, in effect, of two football teams, and I now turn it over to Counselor Saslaw. Two-minute recess, so moved. Please take your seats. I now turn it over to Counselor Saslaw.
Thank you, Council President. So tonight, we have two football teams here from PBD Youth Football. I just wanted to tell the players that Mayor Bettencourt regrets he cannot be here, personally be here tonight, but he wanted to convey his congratulations to all of you. This year, PBD merged with the Commonwealth Youth Football and CHIR, creating New England Commonwealth Youth Football and CHIR, NECYFC, which is made up of 12 associations from the North Shore, Middle Saks, and Suffolk County communities. In its first year, PBD dominated, with CHIR placing first in both league competitions. Every level of football finished the season undefeated and represented us in championship games with our Spartan 5th and 6th grade and our Gladiators 7th and 8th grade winning Super Bowls. Tonight, we are recognizing our Spartan and Gladiator football teams having undefeated seasons and both winning NECYFC Super Bowls. On a personal note, this was my first time in 10 years I was involved with the league as my boys both graduated, but I've been lucky enough to have been involved, and I'm lucky enough to broadcast many of the football games. I want to let the boys know that you're leaders, that your fellow schoolmates look up to you, whether you know that or not. The commitment, the time that you need to put into football, that shows that you're a leader and that you'll do what you're supposed to do. And what I also know is that when this league was started many years ago, and I'm sure many of you have heard it, your coaches talk about three things: family, school, and football. I congratulate you on doing that this year. At this time, I'd like to ask league president and coach of the Gladiator championship team, Billy Woods, to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Joel, and thank you to the council for having us here. This really was a be in the air for our program, as Counselor Saslaw said, so I just want to let you know how appreciative we are to be recognized for this. This is a special moment for our program and a special moment for our kids. And I know Mayor Bettencourt's not here, but he's always been very supportive of our program, and we appreciate that. And thank you, Counselor Saslaw, for filling in all the stats throughout the year. And I want to, I want to thank everybody on our board who's worked so hard, and all our coaches. I know we have a lot of players here tonight, 34 kids on my roster, probably another 25 kids, so thank you. Thank you for having us. I appreciate it. And did you want me to...
So what we're going to do is, I'm going to read the certificate that's being given to each child tonight in recognition of what they accomplished, and the recognition reads, "On behalf of the city of PBD, I am happy and honored to recognize a football player as a member of the 2019 PBD Tanners Youth Football Super Bowl Championship Team. Your outstanding achievement in winning the NECYFC and NACMS AYFL Spartan Division Super Bowl brings great pride to our community. We commend you on your great sportsmanship and team play. Congratulations and best wishes for continued success in all your future endeavors. In witness whereof, I have errant two set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal..." of the city of Peeby, Massachusetts, this 13th day of February 2020. Edward A. Betancourt, Mayor of City of Peeby." So I'm going to ask the head coach of the Spartans to come up, Bob Maglione, to read off the players' names, and I will give them the certificates. And before I do that, I would like to recognize Bob and his entire staff. Bob Maglione is the head coach, assistant coaches Chris Drescher, Steve Segesi, Mark Gordon, and Scott Paterelli. And if Coach Maglione could come up.
All right. First up, number three, Dominic Rigano. Number four, Luke Maglioni. Number five, Steven Segesi. Number 21, Mark Gordon. Number 22, Gabriel Casciano. Number 26, Micael Bay. Number 33, Kayden Stickney. Number 42, Dylan Paterelli. Nate, don't get mixed, I don't know how to pronounce your last name too well, but number 44, Nathan Imbrasovich. Next up, number 51, Connor Regan. Next up, 62, Dylan Lohman. Number 65, Phoenix Espinal. Number 67, Jacob Collins. Number 71, James Hooper. Number 74, Louis Levinistie. Number 76, Braden Murray. Number 77, Matthew Dresser. Number 78, Freddie Espinal. Number 80, CJ Olympio. And last but not least, number 87, CJ Missoni.
And now for the 7th and 8th grade Gladiators. First off, head coach Billy Woods, assistant coach Luke Ben, assistant coach Mark Clinton, assistant coach Dave Dugan, Jimmy Festa, Nick Gregory, and Edward Silva.
Kyle Mora. Joseph Kika. Jaden Mim. Nick Dresser. Alex Silva. Joey Tebow. Donnie Kavanaugh. Nick Gregory. Lincoln Dugan. Troy Kadiah. Eli Batista. Jacob Bane. Anthony Silva. Matthew Betancourt. John Dragitas. Dominic Scalisi. Nicholas Branceforti. Marcus Higgins. Christos Wilkins. Mark Clinton. Brian Stevens. Michael McDonough. Jimmy Festa. Alex Jackson. Gavin Silva. Anthony Lopez. Christopher Bonfanti. Aidan Negron. Jackson O'Brien. Jordan Fuenzalida. Thomas Perillo. Matthew Mastercola. Nikos Wilkins. And last, Christopher Collins.
So before we leave, I also wanted to recognize the parents. Without it, it couldn't be possible, so I'm going to ask the boys to all give their parents a big round of applause. You got great sweatshirts, you had a great season, so congratulations.
I'd like to entertain a motion to...
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Recession until we have the regular council meeting.